Let's go ahead and get started. Looks like we're ready back there. Jody, John? We ready?
Yes.
Okay. We'll get started. I guess we'll do introductions in the room first. I'm Pat Malone, Benton County Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, Benton County Administrator.
Vance Cronin. Can you guys hear me, Vance Cronin, County Council?
Yes, yes. All in clear.
Public Information Officer.
And John and Jody.
Zan Ojero, Commissioner.
Annabelle Hadameo, Commissioner.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Danielle Brown, Benton County House Department interim co-director.
Charlie Fountain, Health Department interim co-director.
And our friends in Philomath.
Good morning. Mike Todi, West Oregon District Forester, Department of Forestry.
Good morning, Mike.
And Ted Erdman, I'm here with him.
Morning, Mike and Ted. Are there any announcements?
Joe? Commissioner Malone, for Danielle Brown and Charlie Fountain, just FYI for you, we have, it looks like about an hour and a half worth of topics prior to getting to the policy discussions surrounding the coronavirus incident. So if you do not need to be on the line for these other conversations, you can certainly check back later. Nick was to identify the target for you, which I believe is 10:30, for us to begin the policy discussions around the coronavirus incident. So that's just an FYI for you.
Thank you.
I'll ask for comments from the public. I don't see any public physically in our office. And do we have any public online? Hearing none. Review and approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. We'll move on to number four, Chair decisions. Are we going to talk about that later, Joe?
And this is in regards to what, Commissioner Malone?
Not sure. There's been a couple, and that may come under number six.
No. So under our ordinance allowing emergency declaration, any decisions that you have made outside of the board meeting must be approved at the next available meeting.
Okay.
So we're putting this down as a placeholder for all of your subsequent meetings to give us the opportunity to have the board as a whole approve any decisions you might have made in between meetings. So did you make the decision yesterday to close the public lobbies?
Yes.
Okay. So Annabelle and Zan, and that was a decision that I had in mind when I asked Teresa to put this item as a standing item on the agenda. Yesterday, and I think yesterday, Pat made the decision, and I'm sure you're all aware of this, Joe was aware of this, and worked on it with us, that the public libraries would be closed and that non-essential county functions would only be accessible to the public via telephone, via website, email, fax, et cetera. As part of that decision, I note that Lilia sent out a press release, I don't know if it was last night or this morning.
It was late yesterday, I believe.
Yep.
Announcing that decision.
And we did re...
In advance, I did brief the Commissioners via email yesterday.
Great, great. So because that was a decision that the Chair made on his own under the emergency powers of Chapter 32, it requires approval by the board. So I would ask the board to put forward a motion approving the Chair's decision to close the public libraries effective 5:00 p.m., May 23, 2020.
Vance, question for you.
So who?
Yes. I'm assuming that's lobbies, not libraries.
Yes.
Well, I was going to say fix the漏音 errors.
I'm sorry. I cut Joe off because I didn't want to skip over the motion second.
Oh, so you intended to say libraries or lobbies?
Lobbies. I don't know why library came down.
You referred to libraries twice, so I...
I don't know why. Well, public, for all my life, it's been public libraries, okay?
You are missing the library already, Vance.
That was my comment also, because I didn't remember closing libraries.
We did not.
Lobbies.
Lobbies.
Okay.
So you had a motion second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So like I said, this, item number four, Chair decisions, will appear on all of your meeting agendas throughout the duration of the emergency, just so that we can pick up any decisions and consider them and hopefully approve them in accordance with our local permits.
And will you be tracking those?
To the best of my ability, yes.
Okay.
As long as you let me know what you've done.
Because I remembered I did something, and it started Friday, but it was a little fuzzy.
I remember I did something. That's not a good way to start a sentence.
Well, that's better than not remembering anything.
I have a quick request. Since I looked at the agenda yesterday afternoon, it's changed. And if the agenda's changed quickly like this, can someone shoot us out just a text or a quick notice so that we can be more prepared, given needing to switch back and forth between screens and be ready?
I think Teresa sent out the updated agenda late afternoon yesterday, so it should be in your packet.
Yes, it is now, but when I checked it yesterday, and it must have been right before she sent out a revision, I printed it and I felt I was ready for today, but obviously I was not. So...
So yes, we can check in with staff and ask them to also notify you other than email when a change is made.
Email is fine. I've been checking very, very regularly. I just didn't see it. So it might, it just probably was just my error, so apologize.
I think the only change is under seven new business, 7.1, with the resolution that Marriottley will talk about later in the meeting.
That's correct.
Standing item for Chair decisions. Yeah, just a different order of business. Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. We'll get into the work session. ODF, Mike Todi, there you are. You moved. You're up there. And Ted Erdman, speaking to us from the outskirts of Philomath. So go ahead and... Seems like there were a couple questions, and if you want to start off with those, and give us your update.
Thank you, Commissioner. So once again, for the record, Mike Todi, West Oregon District Forester with the Oregon Department of Forestry, and I'm here with the Philomath Unit Forester, Ted Erdman. We do have just a couple of points of business, and then we've been, for at least in my tenure as District Forester here, have been making a point of coming and visiting formally with the West Oregon District on an annual basis, just to give you an update. So understanding, we have a lot of high priorities to work on here today. We want to make sure we cover our business, and then we can do as much of an update, or as little of an update, whatever the Commissioners please there this morning. So to start with, our point of business here is sometime around 2007, Benton County Board of Commissioners appointed the Benton County Forest Land Classification Committee. We did a bunch of work on that with classifying lands, reviewing lands within our protection district boundaries, and then preliminary work across the rest of Benton County. And let me just pause for a second. Can everybody hear me okay?
You're fine on my end, Mike.
Doing great.
Thank you. And so those, it was interesting, we updated the administrative rule for those committees, because initially, when those committees were appointed, there was no term limit or anything. It was like a lifetime appointment, or maybe a sentence, if you look at it that way. But they actually have term limits now, and we've had folks that have termed out and changed over time. And most recently here, one of the, and so that committee is made up of an ODF appointee, and in Benton County's case, that's the gentleman who, that I'm pointing out here, Ted Erdman. The county commissioners appoint three people, and there's kind of some rules around appoint there. Extension appoints one person on the committee, and State Fire Marshal appoints one person. So the Benton County committee members, again Ted, are Commissioner Malone.
Right. Commissioner Malone. Jim Warrance is our Chair, and most recently was Sarah Lyman of Coast Range Conifers, lived down in the Monroe country.
So hats off, at some point in time, we need to give a trophy. Jim Warrance has been the Chair and on the committee since it started, and it's been just a tremendous asset and a great person to work with. Recently, Sarah Lyman has had, just with personal reasons and workload, is looking to resign, so we're looking for a new appointee there to take her place, and this is the county commissioners. And so I will turn that part over to Ted now.
Sure. So we contacted Jennifer Bee with Starford Forest to see if she had the time and energy and interest in this out of the committee. And so, you know, if, I guess we'd just like to put that name forward to you all for consideration as a replacement for Sarah Lyman. She had agreed to it, and the rules allow an employee of a company to be considered, you know, forest landowner. So it's well within the rules.
Mike, what's the timetable on advancing her nomination to the board?
We're hoping, I guess, two different approaches there, Commissioners. One, you can accept that, you know, just doesn't offer here today, or if you have another person or a consideration you want to do. We would like to kind of get that going. As you recall, at some meeting, Commissioner, that there's, we have to review and reapprove the classification every five years, and we're into that cycle, and we'd like to get that work done before we get to your next meeting.
I would be happy with Jennifer Bee if we want to go ahead and make that applicable today, but want to check with Vance on that.
You can make any decisions you need to make today.
I would move approval of Jennifer Bee for the Forest Classification Committee. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, good. My reason for asking about the timetable is we have an April meeting. Is that correct? And getting her onboard, I think, would be helpful. We don't, one sales point for this committee is they don't have a lot of meetings, but I think that would be good if we can get her onboard for the April meeting.
That was our intention exactly, Commissioner, was to get whoever the new member was going to be there for that as kind of the onboarding and introduction to the whole process there. The other point of business there is, I did mention the Chair of the committee, Jim Warrance, and his term is up, and we were, he is willing to serve another term, and so we'd be looking for a reappointment there, or I guess a renewal of that appointment.
Does that take action by the county commissioners?
Yes.
I would move approval to reappoint Jim Warrance
as a member of the Forest Classification Committee. I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. I would second your comments, Mike. It's, I think, really helpful to have at least one board member that's been through the whole process and can remember things that were done in the past, and I really appreciate Jim hanging in there for... How many meetings is it? We're in the 50s?
Yeah. I don't know how many he's been on. Yeah, pushing 50 total since in his tenure with it, because when we were doing the initial review, we were meeting, you know, once a month, including field trips, and then public hearings and public meetings. And he's got some battle scars there too, but he has stuck with it. And it really kind of serves, he does a great job, I believe, as Chair, and he has, like, as you suggested, Commissioner, some of that institutional knowledge and background from the process as well.
Agreed.
Cool. So I think if we capture that in your meeting notes, if we get a copy of that, that will suffice for our records, so we'll look for that here, get those online when we get the chance.
Okay.
So that was kind of the formal business that we really wanted to make sure we got done today, and I would just ask, you want us to kind of touch on some updates? Or how, what are we looking like for time here?
Go ahead, and we have five or 10 minutes for updates, and I've got one short question.
Okay. So I'll just kind of do a rapid fire, kind of keeping it general on a higher level there. So obviously, everybody is working on your responses, reactions, and interactions with COVID-19 out there. I think, you know, most of our agency things get fairly well published from directions through the Governor's Office and OHA and some of those other mechanisms. So about the middle to the latter part of last week, the Department of Forestry made the decision to essentially close our lobbies, if you will, our public portions of our buildings, to implement only. We have the ability and have had for quite some time to do an awful lot of our business electronically, so people can file notifications electronic, and we can do interactions. We've moved to pretty much this platform for all of our meetings, so video conferences, meetings, and all that. So our business is still kind of going on, and we are open for business. We're just trying to obviously limit personal interactions. As our stewardship foresters are out in the field administering the Forest Practices Act, we see that as critical business to keep folks working and moving out there. Whereas we're doing initial attack on fires, we had a fire last week in Lincoln County, I guess, it was just barely in Lincoln County, so you guys got lucky there. We're continuing with that and just keeping social distancing in there. So the only other point I would bring up with ODF is we currently have a management team deployed at the Office of Emergency Management and their Emergency Coordination Center that's assisting OHA and OEM with statewide COVID response and their support work. So obviously, our incident management teams are very well versed at primarily wildland fire responses, but we are all risk, and there's another example up here that we're working on. So I've got two staff members from our district here that are on that incident management team in Salem right now. And so it's been an interesting experience for those folks, and I think everybody in this particular process is kind of learning as we're going through that. So if you'd like some specific information on any of that, just reach out to us, and we'd be happy to share that with you.
Okay.
I might use the last couple minutes of my time. Normally, I would update you on, you know, potential revenue coming in and the amount of work going on there, but just kind of keeping it at a much higher level this particular time around. We had several bills that would have affected Department of Forestry statewide that didn't quite get passed through with the way the legislative session ended up there. One of them, or actually, there was about six or seven bills around wildland fire response, some introduced by the Governor's Office and others by specific committees there, and really pointed back to the work that the Governor's Wildland Fire Response Council that she had formed had put together. So some of those findings, recommendations were included in there, different funding packages and all those. Those are still kind of in limbo, if you will, I would say right now, in terms of how that's going to come together. There was some intention to address some of that through emergency board meetings of the legislative process, but obviously, all their energy is being diverted to a higher party right now with the COVID-19 response. The other notable, I think, would have been very notable legislation was centered around, it was a House Bill 4168 that was centered around memorandum of understanding that was actually signed by 13 different conservation and environmental groups and 13 different forest landowner or landowner representative type groups there. Kind of a, it was, the Governor's Office kind of led that conversation, and it was really a point to get folks away from introducing competing legislation through the legislative process, introducing competing ballot measure initiatives, and really mark a new era, hopefully of change, where folks are willing to actually sit down and kind of discuss differences in issues. Forest management in Oregon has always been a little bit contentious, and the sides seem to be very entrenched these days. So there's a process there that they were trying to work on. They were looking for kind of a legislative fix that would have given the agency, our agency, some additional funding to help with our electronic notification process, to make that a little more robust in terms of notifications that other folks from the public could look at any time. And so that also is kind of just hanging out there right now. I haven't heard anything specific. The MOU's still in place, and I think all those sides are still in agreement there in terms of what might happen legislatively. I would suspect that it'll be reintroduced in the full session next year if something were to come with that.
Okay.
Lots of other details I could go into, but I will kind of leave it open there in your interest of time here.
Okay. Could you comment briefly on the, it ties in with the wildland fire business, but hiring of a number of extension agents that specifically deal with wildland fire prevention?
So initially, Steve Fitzgerald from Oregon State University was going to try and join us today, and he's unable to do that. And so I have reached out and talked to him. So what Commissioner Malone's referring to is in the 2019 session, the full session, there was some money allotted to OSU Extension specifically around wildland fire in the urban interface. And so it was going to fund a number of positions, and I'm kind of going from memory here, Commissioner, so don't hold me to these exact numbers, please. But there was six or seven positions statewide that they were going to add. One, as the Director here on campus at Oregon State University. That advertisement for that position is out on the streets right now. And then five to six kind of field positions, if you will, scattered around the state and their extension offices there. And I was, that, OSU is really kind of looking at that program not as to replace an existing program, so to exist, for an example, some of the fuel mitigation work that Department of Forestry is doing around the state, or one of our federal partners is doing. It was really there to kind of be in addition to the existing work and cooperatives and groups that are already working out there. So the thought was, there'll be some general direction in that that comes out, but it'll also kind of, they'll look to be where they can add value in each specific instance around the state. So they are looking to have one of those positions somewhere around either campus, kind of the Northwest Oregon kind of liaison for that program. And then the others will be in the, you know, Southwest Oregon, Eastern Oregon, some of those more, a little more fire-prone parts of our state there. But we're looking forward to, we have a really strong working relationship with the extension foresters already. Another branch of their work to help really with the public education part of that and reaching out to public owners and people that live in those higher-risk areas in the wildland urban area.
Great. The number that was in my mind was six also. So it's a significant investment. The dollars were appropriated in last year's session, so this program is proceeding?
They're proceeding, and the first step is to get those positions filled. And once again, I had asked Steve Fitzgerald, you know, if they were going to, if the, you know, the process was to hire the Director, and then that person's going to hire the field coordinator-type positions. And that wasn't super clear, but he felt like each one of those positions would be advertised by the local OSU Extension manager in that area, and kind of those folks would do the hiring and manage those positions. With just some statewide coordination here from campus.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the ODF folks?
Just one thing, I'm just concerned about some of the public access things that I've been hearing, and I don't know, Mike, if you're having any problems with that. I did hear that out at Alsea Falls, it was a convention of people. Just curiosity of what's happening on state lands in terms of people maybe not realizing the situation we're in.
All right. So I appreciate that question there. I talked specifically about our facilities and our buildings. And so here, it was, we coordinated with Oregon State Parks and Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, the state agencies, on closing campgrounds, trailhead, at nature, because the Department of Forestry, we don't have any campgrounds in this district, but certainly on the Tillamook State Forest, like you do. That, so each one of those agencies started rolling out these closures of campgrounds to keep the social distancing and address the concerns with COVID-19 there. Unfortunately, kind of the way it got rolled out was ODF was closing all their campgrounds on one day, OPRD was closing their campgrounds on a different day, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. And so one of the things that the Governor's Order really kind of helped with was kind of consolidate that and make it more standardized. Alsea Falls is the Bureau of Land Management, and I know the federal agencies are following suit with that, so.
Yeah. I just wondered about that coordination, because yeah. And then, of course, there's also the conventions that are occurring on the beaches are another issue.
And so the, I know, like, for instance, reading Representative Gonberg's update that he's sending out just about daily these days, and talking with our counterparts there at Lincoln County, they're basically trying to close everything down to avoid that. And I guess, from my understanding from my staff, I have a unit office in Toledo, and they're pretty well engaged. They were working all weekend on some forestry-related things, but it was really busy on the beach this last weekend. People were trying to, you know, they couldn't go to their normal haunts. It was a beautiful weekend, it was the start of spring break, all those things where you would normally expect places to be busy, and that caused the Governor to kind of, I think, really kind of was the background before she started taking this latest step.
Okay. Zan, did you have a question?
I don't think so. It was just, we did get, I'm going to back up and say, sure. We got one citizen complain about burning, and about the fact that there seems to be quite a bit of burning going on, because lots of people are working in their yards since they're not working. And there are some folks that have compromised breathing issues that are concerned about excessive smoke, and don't know whether you've heard any...
excessive smoke and don't know whether you've heard any other complaints directly or whether you all have thought about changing your restrictions on burning at this time?
Well, we had one person, there were actually, whether you knew it or not, there were two broadcast burns that were conducted over the weekend, one Saturday, one Sunday. Likely didn't know about it because you didn't see the smoke, which meant our forecasters in the process went very well. So just to back up a step, I guess, Commissioner, the Department of Forestry, from a smoke management perspective, the only authorities we have are over slash burning smoke or logging slash. We obviously have jurisdiction over fire risk sort of related things. So as an example, we'll ban burning during the summer when we get fire season on. And that's from a fire risk standpoint, not a smoke standpoint. The backyard burning rules are actually administered through the Department of Environmental Quality, so we don't have a whole lot to do with that. I shouldn't, I got to be careful when I say that because the fire we responded to last week was somebody backyard burning and escaped and burned up two acres of their property. So we always kind of get involved in those things, but from a smoke related, health related standpoint, DEQ would be in charge of that. I have, we've been having that conversation internally. I have not reached out to DEQ right now to see if they're going to impose some sort of closure on backyard burning because of those related health issues and the relation between respiratory issues and COVID-19.
Thank you.
I had one complaint also, so if appropriate, I would like you folks to talk to DEQ. I did notice on Saturday, burning, I believe, was 1:00 to 5:30, which is as short a window as I've seen. So I think they may be responding to trying to strike a balance between air quality and in some ways mitigating fire risk, which is my last comment. I appreciate keeping some of these wildland fire programs moving. We will have a fire season, probably not this week, but thinking of, may even start in June depending on spring rains. But you folks need to strike a balance between the current situation and what we all know is coming. So thank you for your report. Zan?
I would like to just say that I know that the other thing that's on a five-year cycle is our Community Wildfire Protection Plan process. And I know that that's been a subject of discussion with our community development department in terms of getting that process ramped up again. We have some capacity issues there, but I'm hoping that that will happen soon to even go, because that's something we can do, again, by co-coming or other platform.
Yeah. You know, we've got a lot of connections there. We use those Community Wildfire Protection Plan. The ones we work with are all countywide and those are, we get our priorities from those plans, ways we're applying for grants for fuel reduction and that type of thing.
All right. Thank you, Mike and Ted.
I'll just leave you with one closing comment here. In the constant state of change here that we're all accustomed to, will likely be my last annual update to the Benton County Board of Commissioners, so I'm going to move on to some new grounds here starting July 1st. And I don't know who will be sitting in this chair next year at this point in time, but I will certainly make sure that they have all your contact information and between Ted and the new district forester, they'll be reaching out to all of you. So it's been a pleasure and I'm sure I'll at least interact with some of you here between now and the end of June, but wanted to make you aware of that as well. So thanks for your time here this morning and best of luck.
Thank you, Mike.
Appreciate your efforts, Mike. All right. Next up is update Stand By Me from COG. I see Jennifer Moore's picture. Is Sue Forte going to join us this morning?
Not this morning, Commissioner.
Okay. Well, I think we're ready, so why don't you start your update on Stand By Me?
Perfect. So in addition to the written report that you have in your packet, I did want to highlight for this current period that we were able to successfully execute the contract and the memorandum of understanding with our Delaware counterparts in early January. This was several months later than we had originally anticipated and so that has impacted some of the timing of some of our other activities. Our Joint Oregon Leadership Team Meetings, or JOE, for short, are being scheduled for every other week. We have our next check-in on Thursday this week. And two of the primary agenda items, as I've mentioned in the report, are to coordinate our peer visit, our Delaware counterparts to visit us here. And then also for coordination of our two funder visits with two of Delaware's strong funders that have indicated that they would like to see the program replicated elsewhere. So those are our two highest priorities at this point. Once we are able to confirm those dates and times and start working on the logistics specifically for the peer visit, I'll loop back around with you folks, probably via email, just to let you know what that looks like. As I've been talking with the Delaware team, one of the things that we're hopeful that we'll be able to coordinate, just given the current environment and the information we have available to us, I used to say at this time, but we'll say today, we would like to be able to ensure that they have an opportunity to meet you folks, to meet our colleagues with the Early Learning Hub. Depending again on how we're able to coordinate that timing, our goal would be that it would be around the time when the hub is actually having one of their governing board meetings so that we could introduce the Delaware team to the Early Learning Hub governing board. Beyond that, we'll coordinate and I'm sure there will be a lot of detail that we'll need to work out. And again, as I said, we'll keep you folks in the loop via email as appropriate, sort of in between these more formal check-ins. In our last report, we indicated that we were doing some work around an existing 501(c)(3) entity that we would be able to use as our fiscal agent for grant applications where the funder required a 501. And that entity is Cascade West Community Development Corporation and that is now available to us. And I've put some additional information about that in the written report and happy to answer any questions. The balance for this reporting period is that our grant writing efforts are top priority. We are looking for another grant writer under contract. The woman that we had been partnering with has had a change in her employment status and so she's not got the same kind of time to be able to devote to our project. And so again, we're looking for another contract grant writer. In the meantime, I am shepherding that process and so it's as high of a priority as we can make it at this point. From the first report, last time we came to speak with you, we had identified a number of stakeholder visits that were underway. Those are now complete and as we mentioned, we had a lot of really great conversations. We filled in a number of questions and a number of additional resources that we'll be able to move forward into our planning phase as we delve a little deeper in quote-unquote "into the weeds" with the Delaware team. Excuse me. We are working on some of our back office logistics at this point. As many agencies are, we're in process of our budget cycle and so we're building out what the budget for year one looks like. Obviously that's critical for our grant writing and funding proposal. We had an opportunity to meet with State Treasurer Tobias Reed. Thank you, Dan, for the introduction. That meeting was really robust, the treasurer plus several members of his team. The treasurer's office is supportive and willing to help in whatever way makes sense as we unfold. And we also had a follow-up meeting with James Stinks, the Financial Education Program Manager, really just around the work he's doing at the state level, around that ecosystem, you know, what agencies, what entities are providing various degrees of financial education, financial literacy, working toward financial stability, financial competence, financial empowerment. We did have some conversations just around shared vocabulary and what different language implies. So that was really helpful for us, especially on the grant writing side. We are also working with internal COG GIS staff to provide a number of relevant charts and graphs and data points that we can use to benchmark what we look like now before we actually launch this program. That will be replicable data points that we can continue then to measure against as we move forward. Our next report to you folks on this project will be at the end of June, so we'll be in that July timeframe and I'll work with Teresa to get back on the schedule, but I'm happy to answer questions. What else do you want to know?
On the 501(c)(3), that was an existing structure that you folks got going again, is that correct?
Correct. So it, I believe, I'm trying to see the paperwork in my head, I believe at launch in 2011 or 2012, somewhere in that timeframe, the primary rule for the Development Corporation is organized for charitable, scientific, and educational purposes with three primary objectives. Improve the regional economy, provide community and economic development assistance, and assist low and moderate income individuals and households. And so that third bullet around assisting low, low and moderate income individuals and households, that's where the work of Stand By Me would fall. That side, being mindful that the mission of the Development Corporation is much broader than solely serving Stand By Me. Phil Warnock and I will work very closely to both staff and to support the Development Corporation where it makes sense around joint community and economic development goals and activities and around some of the community service program goals and activities.
Okay. Thank you. Zan?
So does that board already have, I mean, does that, just know, organization already have a board?
The answer is two parts. Yes, it does. For a period of time, it was, I won't say defunct, but it was not meeting maybe as regularly as it could have. And so at this point, the Oregon Cascade West Council of Government Board of Directors is the, not oversight for it, but is partly responsible for helping to shepherd the board of the Development Corporation. And so in this immediate time, Executive Committee for the Council of Government has constituted the board of the Development Corporation and we've identified, gosh, I want to say it's about 15 different individuals to approach for becoming board members for the Development Corporation. The goal is to ensure that we reflect the diversity of the entire region, so membership from all three counties, that we also reflect the diversity of our business sectors and that we have a number of folks that are in other areas, especially around that third bullet of assisting low and moderate income individuals and households, that we have those constituents represented as well. And so those recruiting calls are ongoing and as those individuals are, you know, they give us indication that they're in and they're on board, then the COG's Executive Committee will appoint those board members to the Development Corporation's board and then we'll launch from there.
Okay. I have an unrelated-
A little long-winded response and I apologize for that.
If there are no other questions on this topic, I have an unrelated question that is COG-based but not-
Sure.
Any?
I've got one on the grant writers. That, has that slowed the lack of grant writer currently? Is that, what impact is that having on the program?
It has slightly slowed our ability to complete and submit grant proposals. I'm currently running point on that and just over the last couple of weeks, my attention has admittedly been a little distracted with response to COVID-19 and the like. But again, got a number of resources within the local community and I've got a couple of leads that I can follow up on, but yes, it has impacted.
Okay. Well, not that you needed, but getting the new grant writer in place as quickly as possible seems, seems like the goal, should be the goal.
Absolutely.
If there's no other questions on this topic, Zan?
My unrelated question has to do with veteran services and the fact that, of course, we've gotten our, the next letter on the fact that we're underspending and to know what you have planned in terms of trying to spend out those veteran services dollars.
Yeah. So in the immediate, we have expanded hours for both of the support staff. As we've discussed several times in the past, the vacancy in the Veteran Service Officer position has been a large impact on the budget. That position is fully staffed and Curtis has been ramping up incredibly quickly and has actually implemented a couple of measures within the program that are enabling us to serve veterans, I wouldn't say more creatively, but to serve them beyond solely the claim. And so we're, I guess you could look at it, that is an expansion of service that the office has typically not provided in the past. And so being able to expand the hours of both of our assistant veteran service officers while Curtis is in that learning stage, but also to avail of those additional opportunities to serve has and will continue to make an impact on the budget. So we plan to continue that expansion of hours through the end of the year, being mindful that we don't want to be over by the end of the year. So we're monitoring that budget very closely. We also have been able to, where appropriate, actually meet with veteran clients. For example, if they're at an assisted living facility, we're traveling to them and other cases where the veteran themselves is homebound. So that will impact their mileage line, not, you know, huge amounts, but that does add up. We're also working where, last year we talked to you about the Veteran, VTAP, Transportation Assistance Program, which is a partnership with Community and Economic Development. And I am very pleased to say that that program is actually open and available. Our ride line teams and our vet teams are screening for eligibility and making that match where appropriate. And so we do plan to make another disbursement to the VTAP fund before the end of the year, which again will, will impact the overall budget. And we also have been able to purchase a small, couple of small technology items that will enhance the ability of our, of our team to be able to really meet requests in more time than there. So a number of smaller things that are adding up. And thank you for bringing that up because I do need to- And thank you for bringing that up because I do need to respond to that letter and we'll make sure that you folks are copying on that response.
That'd be great. And I'm assuming, of course, that the COVID-19 situation is putting a real crimp in any ability to meet with veterans at this point. So, you know, I hope you all-
Yeah.
-go to meeting or something so that you can interact with folks.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, we are, our whole team is remote. We are taking, of course, appointments by telephone rather than in person. And that's both for the safety of the veteran as well as for our staff. We're employing technology wherever we can and so far have not seen a real drastic impact. But, you know, we're, we're being creative with workarounds to getting documentation, signatures, and that sort of thing.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Last chance for a comment, Jen?
Just since you asked, thank you, Commissioner. Just to let you know that for our Meals on Wheels program, as an update, our dining rooms continue to be closed to dining room participants, although we are still able to offer them a to-go meal on regular serving days. And service to our own delivery clients is continuing. We are working very hard on the backside of the program to really project possible scenarios and workarounds. Again, according to the information we have available to us today, to ensure that service is not interrupted or is interrupted as minimally as possible. We are also working with our money management team to take as much electronic as we can, looking at creative workarounds for those things that are location-dependent. And similar for our senior core programs within Foster Grandparents and Senior Companion, you know, doing that outreach to ensure that our clients and volunteers are feeling safe and still connected. And then just as a high level for the rest of COG as an agency, I know that within Community and Economic Development, Phil and his team, all of the planners are working remotely. And they're working on, you know, schedules and backups and contingency plans for the non-emergent medical transportation teams. Senior Disability Services is looking to get as many folks as possible remote as quickly as possible. And then again, we're working through the contingencies for location-dependent folks, spreading everybody out. We're even using Zoom within the building to keep people, you know, with that physical separation, so.
Okay, great.
We are very nimble. I'm learning. We're really flexible.
Well, this isn't a comment just for your organization, but coming out of this emergency situation, I think we may learn more efficient ways of doing our day-to-day business. So I really appreciate the update and your efforts and carry on with your very important work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Next up is our quarterly update on economic development, Kate Porche. And thank you for-
Hi there. Can you guys hear me?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, you're clear.
Thank you. Good, wonderful. I couldn't, I couldn't see if my little, I didn't have a little microphone on my screen. No, thank you for having me. And it's interesting, I have sort of pivoted, as we all have, and was hoping to use this time not so much to talk about our work over the last quarter, but to change focus and talk about the work that we have underway amidst the crisis, if that sounds okay to you guys. And then also to discuss the potential for thinking about some loan funds. It was late last night when I got information out to Teresa. I don't know, did you guys receive my late staff reports and the attachment that went with this?
I do not have that.
Okay. And that's, that's okay. I will talk it through and I'll be happy to email you afterwards. It's, I was busy all day, so I apologize. I wasn't able to get that out till like 6:00 p.m. Okay, so real quickly, if I could, I'd like to walk through the work that our office has been focused on since the crisis. And like the other folks you've been talking to, our team now is all working remotely. Catherine Duvall, who's new to our team, is actually staffing the E O C on the liaison team. That, they're getting pretty close to rolling out a team focused solely on economic recovery. And so she will be there. She's our booth on the ground physically at the E O C. And then Jerry, myself, Heather are all working remotely. All of us focused solely on the business recovery at this point in time. So real quickly to go over with you some of the work that we were able to do in just even the last week and some of the updates generally that I think are important. And I know this is an email I sent to Joe and I believe he pushed out to you, but just to highlight. So of course, the SBA Economic Injury Disaster Loans are now online and available. We in Benton County were able to help be a part of getting the governor the information she needed to make that proclamation and get us lined up for those funds. We have had a number of businesses interested in that, applying. The question that they have right now is on the timing of those funds. So we've reached out to our state and federal partners to understand that answer because that's going to be really critical to folks and I'll talk about that a little bit more later. We have set up our yescorvallis.org website as kind of the clearinghouse of information, if you will, for folks. And specifically, yescorvallis.org/resources. We have lots of information there for businesses that they can use. And the other cool thing that we did in partnership, we set up three-time-a-week calls with all of our partners in Corvallis and Benton County. We've got both of our chambers of commerce, we've got the business, I can never remember the name, their BAM, the business, business something of Monroe. Anyway, the Monroe Business Group is on there. And Visit Corvallis, all of our partners, three-time-a-week meeting. Anyway, we all got together and created these really cool business guides so that local businesses can fill out a form, update whether they're open, whether they're closed, if they have special services that they're offering, like pickup at the curb. It's a fluid document, so businesses are able to keep that information up to date by filling out the form. And then the Google spreadsheet is available and visible for anybody in the community to look it up and see how they can still stay safe but support our local businesses, which we feel like is the priority for everyone, of course. So we're pretty excited about that. That information is also on that yescorvallis.org/resources site. So you can check that out. It's kind of a new one. We continue to receive a handful of emails from different businesses. We're working to address those. We've committed, we've done outreach to all of the businesses in our CRM and let them know that we're here, that we're happy to help if they need a phone call, if they want to talk to an actual human being. And so we're committing at this point to a 24-hour turnaround time to answer those questions and phone calls and be available for them. In some cases, we're farming those calls out to our partners, like at the chamber, if it's more of a chamber-type question, but truly making sure we're connecting them to the resources we need. So again, we're trying to act as that central resource for folks. We, oh, we were able to participate in a video that, you know, Lilia, your P I O, is doing these really wonderful videos that have been popular. And so they invited me in and so we're able to be a part of that and are looking to do another video in the future because it seems people enjoy quickly kind of getting information through that route. That's a great route. So we're excited to do more of those in the future. The final thing I want to point out is that we, what we've really tried to do is create lines of communication, both upstream. And so we have been asked to join the governor's Regional Economic Development Recovery Team. And so we are part of that group, having phone calls twice a week. We are also engaged with our federal partners and participated in a phone call with Senator Brookley's office. Again, trying to get that information that we're hearing from our businesses on the ground, upstream to our state and federal partners. And then likewise, our local partner call that we do three times a week just to make sure that all of our counterparts throughout all of Benton County, one, are receiving the same information we're getting, but then also can share with us specific stories and issues that they're hearing on the ground. So that was like a lot of information, so maybe I want to pause there, see if there's any questions about the work that we already have underway before I transition and maybe discuss a little bit the potentials for loan funds and what that might look like.
On the business update website, is Felomus listed on your site?
Yes. Yeah, no, we have all the partners. And so with, in the business, in those spreadsheets for the businesses, anyone in Benton County. In fact, we even have a couple Lynn County businesses because we, you know, we have that funny crossover like with East Gate and some other areas. But we're sort of welcoming any, any folks that want to participate throughout all of Benton County or nearby to the Corvallis Benton County area.
Great, because it's, it's critical to get accurate information out and keep our businesses supported and everybody scrambling what, what they can and cannot do. And having a central site for information is great.
Thank you. Yeah, and that's what we try to do. And again, Shelley, Shelley Neiman, who's the Chamber Director in Felomus, she's involved in our three-time-a-week calls. And then I'm also weekly, at the end of the week, kind of doing an update and summary, which I'm pushing out to all of the city managers. So of course, Mark, but then the other city managers, so they're up to speed also. And then as well as pushing that out to Joe, so he can send it on to you all.
Great. Zan, did you have a question?
I did and I've forgotten it, so I'm going to have to take a break from that. And let, turn to the loan fund and then maybe I'll remember.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. We'll, we'll just watch for your red microphone to turn green. Okay, so one, one of the items that has come up recently, again, in these calls that I'm participating with, especially this is with the regional partners and the group that the Seramine, through the governor's office, has put together. But you may have read that Lane County got together and quickly propped up a loan program down in Lane County. This was funded, in their case, by the county. And I apologize, I'm pulling up my staff report here. Give me one second. By the county, the City of Eugene and the City of Springfield, they put funding into this program. And they worked in conjunction with community lending work on this. So I think the beauty of the program that they've put together is they're not, they're not having to rely on what we already know are overtaxed finance departments of either the county or the city. They're using community lending work as the administrative arm to do the loan applications, to do the vetting on these loans, and to get the money out the door. I will forward to you the details on that program. I've got it here in front of you. But basically, the program that they created down there is, these are really emergency business loans, which are intended to help businesses remain solvent through the crisis and be able to rebuild when it's over and to help solve specific cash flow problems. Not intended for lost business income, not intended to get them back to pre-crisis level of operations. These are really like emergency cash flow loans. So in, in the staff report that I prepared, I kind of, I guess, really what I'm hoping for today is at least a conversation about the potential for some sort of loan fund. I don't know exactly what that should look like now. There's pluses and minuses to each, but I want to, I guess I want to talk this through with you guys. Talk about, talk about the pluses and minuses for different setups and at least begin the conversation so that we could look at this and be ready to move when the time is right. So for example, the Community Lending Works program really is elegant in a lot of ways. Lane County talked about it on Wednesday, approved it, stood it up and had it out the door on Saturday. They opened it up and within 30 minutes had already filled all the spots. And by the end of that day, had 300 applications. And keeping in mind, the way they had funded it, they really only had room for maybe 13 to 17 loans total, right? So proof positive of the need. So that's great. It's flexible. They got it up. We have a partner that could do this for us. That's all very good. Here's the downside, though. The downside is our community lending works funded this with, with the money from the counties and the cities, but it needed to be in the form of a grant because they are not, they can't make guarantees on how many of these loans are actually going to be repaid. They're estimating that perhaps upwards of 50% may default and they may never see the money back. That is an estimate. It may be less, it may be more significant. So if there is going to be county participation, I want you all as policymakers to understand that early loan programs like this right now are very, very volatile with no, no guarantee of getting your money back or having it able to be reused, right? So in early, that's great, but maybe high volatility also. There are other communities that have actually done grants. These are larger communities like Beaverton or Hillsborough that's done modest grants, again, to this sort of immediate cash flow crisis. That's what we're hearing is the issue from businesses is, one, having funding, even if they've applied for the SBA loans, which again, on the SBA loans, let's remember, these are 3.75% interest loans. So we've got a lot of businesses that aren't interested in taking on debt when they're in crisis. But even if they have applied for them, the timeline to get those funds in-house is unknown. And we've got businesses with immediate cash flow problems, right? So I think a lot of communities are thinking about assisting with cash flow in this way. Another item that we had discussed through our economic development team is perhaps loan funds a little bit later in, down the pipe that could help with business recovery. We don't know what those are like, but that could be a possibility as well.
Annabelle, I think you need to mute your microphone. I'm doing the dishes.
I'm not in the kitchen. I'm not in the kitchen. Somebody's doing dishes, but not me.
Okay. Well, it sounds-
It wasn't me. Here's my hand.
We, we can see you, Kate.
Good.
And why, so why is it me? I don't get that.
I, just a wild guess.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Kate, and-
Yes. So I think the final thing I want to mention to you all, and I know, I guess, a lot of information, we're sort of all over the place here, but in total transparency, I think there's a question that I know certainly Joe will have on his mind and perhaps Commissioners you will as well. I have asked the City of Corvallis about participating in a loan fund. And unfortunately, the city doesn't have any extra funds available. As you guys know, our budget, just even for our economic development work, is incredibly tight. It's possible that from my own budget, I could scrape together a thousand or two, but that would be using funds that we may need for shopping. I don't know. But there is, there's no funding, at least from the City of Corvallis. Many communities are asking their county partners because of funds that are available through the video lottery proceeds. And I know, you know, we have talked about policy for this rainy day fund and perhaps that rainy day is today. Finally, the last thing that I'm really interested in is leveraging any money that Benton County would put in. And this is, this is where we don't know. I don't know if it's better to get a loan program going now and then the state will recognize that and say, hey, yes, Benton County, Lane County, they're doing this. Let's go match what they're doing. That could, could go well. I've talked with our state partners about that. But I've also wondered if there's the potential of, you know, and I don't know. Is this, do we go now? Do we wait? But waiting just a little bit to see if the state says, hey, county, if you put up money, we will for sure match it. I'm really interested in leveraging the money as best as possible. And at this point, I, I don't know, there are no certain leveraging sources available yet. So that is to be determined. So I think that's, that's the bulk of what I wanted to share with you guys on this conversation.
Zan?
I certainly share your caution about being too early of if, and putting money into things, adventures that really aren't going to make it and missing out- adventures that really aren't going to make it and missing out on the opportunity to leverage. So I don't have a problem with waiting a little bit longer on this topic and gathering more information about funding available. I know that you've referred to the lottery funds, that rainy day fund that we left in the economic development budget. The other is that we do have those de-federalized CBG funds that we used when we started up the standby reprogram and there's a little bit of money there as well. But I guess I would love to see a little bit better sense of need and have you play point on this and keep working with us and with Mary Ottley and Joe to think about what is most strategic move forward.
Yeah, and if I could, Commissioner Malone, chime in and say to you, Zan, I, one of the things, one of the projects we are working on this week is what we're calling a rapid response. We are setting up a form where, I don't really want to call it a questionnaire, but it's sort of a questionnaire, but it's a form that businesses can fill out to communicate back to us, to let us know what are their needs, what are their capital needs, how long do they think they're going to be able to stay in business, all of these items, so we can really begin to gather that information. So we're going to push that out, but one of the things we're doing immediately, as soon as this form is designed, which is already, the question's already done, we're just finalizing it, is we're actually going to take a sampling of businesses from all over Benton County, all different sectors, so, you know, retail, manufacturing, farms, and call, actually call these businesses and have communication with 12 to 20 businesses to really try and get this sort of small, it'll be a small sample size, but at least to very quickly get that feedback and understand, okay, if we were to create a loan program, what is your need? When will you need it? And we're kind of, Zan, to your point, thinking we can use that information as the basis of creating a loan program that truly is responsive to the needs of our businesses in Benton County. So that's, that's kind of what we were thinking for next steps, so I think at least, Zan, you and I are sort of on the same page with that.
Kate, back to the Lane County example, is it correct, they have, between the three governmental agencies, they have $600,000 to work with and got 300 applications and could actually handle maybe 20? Is that roughly what we're talking about?
Yeah. Sadly, it's a little bit less. Originally, it was going to, originally, it was 200 from the county, 200 from Springfield and 100,000 from Eugene for a total of 500. Springfield then backed off a little bit, so it ended up being capitalized at a total of $400,000. Those loans have a maximum of $30,000. So depending, you know, if people applied for less, let's say 25,000 on average, they're only going to be able to do about 17 loans.
Okay.
And this is where it's so hard, I mean, and again, it's this balance of trying to be nimble and do something for a small amount of businesses versus leveraging versus the timing. I will say too, in the conversations that I had, and I, maybe I apologize if I didn't, but I actually had a phone call with our partners at Dev Northwest and Community Lending to talk to them about the potential of rolling either this program out or something similar in Benton County. And there's a couple of important messages that I heard back. One, they're absolutely willing to partner with us and they're interested in that, which is great, that we're not going to need, if we want to go this route or something similar, we can use them as partners on the administrative side, so we're not needing to burden Mary's group or the city's group for that. Okay, that's great. Two, in the conversation with Dev Northwest, another item that came up, again, and this is a timing versus benefit question, is equity. You know, making sure that our Spanish-speaking companies hear about this program as well. And do you wait longer to make sure to get the word out in a more equitable fashion? Do you do a lottery? You know, there's some, there's some questions about this to make sure that it's not just well-informed, white, male businesses that get the money, right? I mean, I'm sorry to be candid, but that's one of the, one of the questions that's out there.
Yeah, I roughly have the scale of the ask versus the resources. I guess my thought would be, keep gathering information, we can see what other counties' programs, are they effective? Back to the SBA folks, can you facilitate people getting through the paperwork on that and even though it's a slower process than we like, at least get our folks in the queue and through the process and then hope for a quick turnaround at the other end. But that's a, that's a program that's available and it's too bad, maybe they can work on the interest rate as part of the federal package that's going on, but... So I would, gathering information at this point, I think is critical and find out who, what our needs are.
Sure. Sure. And as for your question, Commissioner Malone, about the facilitating the SBA loans, we have told businesses that we're here to help if they need help. Many, I think, have found it doable, you know, it's an online form, they're able to fill it out and then you can keep finding out the information on timing and letting folks know. And that's where this loan program, if we do something through Benton County, may become urgent as we are hearing back. Again, I only have one business that I've heard from, but they're concerned that if it's a one-month, two-month delay before they actually have the cash in their hands, that's going to be that critical time for them as to whether they will be able to or will not be able to continue to operate permanently.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Malone, I do have a couple of comments before we wrap up.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead, Joe?
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Joe Kirby, County Administrator. Commissioners, I have a couple of suggestions for you, one of those being that I think that Kate Porche and Mary Ottley and I need a little bit of time to have a further conversation surrounding this program and available funds. We have not had the opportunity to have any FaceTime or discussion on what Kate is putting forward this morning. I would also like to point out that every Thursday, Tuesday and Thursday, we're having a policy meeting surrounding the coronavirus incident. That means we would have another opportunity either on Thursday or Thursday of this week or Tuesday of next week to bring additional information back to the board. I understand Kate's sense of urgency here and, but it does appear that it would be helpful to gain additional information and insight and frankly, I'd like to be able to sit down with her and Mary Ottley and work through maybe some of the more details before we bring it back to you.
Any other questions or comments for Kate?
Just one comment, I think that it's been wonderful how fast you and your team have hit the ground and I'm so excited at the evidence that all the networking that you've done ever since you took over the office has formed groups. It took very little time for all of you and your network to get together and start putting out great information and resources. Much appreciated.
Thank you. You bet.
So Kate, if you're comfortable, I would suggest that we get an email chain going about having a dialogue with you and Mary and I either this afternoon or tomorrow morning.
Thank you. That would be incredibly helpful and I'll be happy to initiate that email.
That'd be great.
Great. Well, I would second Zan's comments about your efforts in trying to be strategic and with a lot of unknowns, but gathering information from our local businesses, I think, is something that you folks can do and I would really encourage that so that when money becomes available, which it will, it's a question of where it's coming from and timing, but to be as ready for that as we can. So if there's nothing else...
I don't think Kate's hearing you.
Okay. Do I know why that is?
Kate, can you hear me? Can anybody on the, can, Annabelle or Zan, can you hear us?
I can hear you all. No problem.
But Kate cannot?
I think we were finished, as far as I can tell, so...
So wave goodbye, just wave goodbye.
And if you can lip read, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'll email her real quick.
Okay. We are two minutes ahead of schedule, do we want to have a break here?
I would appreciate a break, we need to do some swapping, you know, folks with the go-to meeting.
Okay.
So a five-minute break would be appreciated.
We have a five-minute break.